Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, April eighth, 2025. It's six thirty P. M. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill twenty-five sixty, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunities for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions were printed on the agenda of the meeting published in advance. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item either virtually or in person, they were to have emailed their comments or requests to speak to the city recorder prior to noon today. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City event announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either time, virtually or in person, you are again to have emailed the city recorder prior to noon today with your name, topic of discussion, and city of residence. And individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Mitchell.
Present.
Counselor Blough.
Present.
Counselor Labonte.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Please stand for the flag salute. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Our consent agenda tonight consists of seven items: approval of the February eleventh regular minutes and February twenty-fifth special meeting minutes, approval of February bank balances, budget report for the period ending two twenty-eight twenty-five, approval of the February check register, legal costs for January twenty-twenty-five, department head monthly reports for March twenty-twenty-five, and item seven is to consider renewing the intergovernmental agreement with Lake Oswego Communications, L O C O M, for public safety communication services, which can confirm warrants for the Gladstone Police Department. Would any member of the council like to pull any item from the consent agenda?
May I pull six just for to have a little conversation about something?
Okay. So Counselor Labonte is requesting that we pull the department head monthly report for for March from the consent agenda. Okay. Without objection, we'll do that. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Garlington, seconded by Counselor Labonte. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. Okay, the consent agenda as amended is approved. And Counselor Labonte, you had a question or concern regarding one of the reports in the item six?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's a small thing, and I'm chief, I'm happy you're here. I just want to make this one comment of one item that comes up often in the being a traffic safety guy. We have radar signs, which are great. They give us an idea as to the amount of traffic and the speeds of traffic. Oftentimes, those radars, in fact, those radars with the signs are used as a traffic calming measure. Sometimes I read it in the staff report sometimes, and perhaps I'm totally wrong on the intent, and that's great. But sometimes I'll read it in the report as if some of the information we get from that speed radar helps kind of indicate that there might not be a speed problem. Again, and I may not be explaining that well, but I am concerned about using information to make decisions about, you know, traffic with information that it might not be, which is deliberately intended to kind of show a slower result in speed, if that makes any sense. Basically, the radar systems are intended to, you know, slow traffic down. I'm not sure we should use that information to make determinations on the speeds that drivers are actually driving, perhaps when the radar machine isn't there.
And specifically, specifically, you're referring to six dash twenty?
That would be, yes.
Okay.
Have that, yes.
And the chief is here if you would like to comment.
And thank you. And I know we've talked about this before. I just I can't help myself but to bring it up. I apologize.
So just for the public who don't have this in front of them, within our report, what is a report from the operations, the operations monthly report includes a report on traffic statistics. And the conclusion is that of the fourteen thousand readings, the average speed was twenty-four miles an hour in a twenty-five mile an hour zone, and only sixty vehicles registered above the posted limit. This would mean, on average, there's only a driver exceeding the speed limit approximately once every eight hours. Now, I know that sounds like much more compliance than a lot of our citizens believe. So I understand where you're coming from. So just to get some clarification from the chief.
I'm not sure how to address it, because I'm not sure really what the question is, but I'll do my best. And if you have, and if you have questions afterwards, I'm happy to answer them. So when we talk about the calming devices, which that is, it's the radar trailer is a calming device, but it's no different if it had a camera on it. Okay, if it had a camera on it, when you hit that speed, when you're that 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 speed comes up on the speed trailer, it's no different than an officer holding a radar. You're going to get that speed. So whether you let off the speed before that or not, it's still going to capture that speed. Now, to answer your question, sure, it's we keep it there for two to three weeks. People are people are going to are going to know that, which is valuable information for us and valuable for that community or that street to have cars slow down. I will never say that cars don't speed in Gladstone, because we know they do. I can't tell you Sergeant Orr, who put that data in there, just kind of averaged it out, what the equivalents would be. Now, it could be that those eighty cars actually was within a four-hour time period, right? Which would which would show that maybe there is some speeding going on. But we also have to consider, at the same time, that a majority of our community does follow the speed limit. And and when you look at the perception of speed versus the actual speed, it's completely different. We've taken citizens out on ride-alongs and actually let them hold the radar gun. And when we say, okay, how fast are they going? They'd say thirty, thirty-five, as an example. And we'd put the radar gun up, and they're actually going twenty-five. So it is a perception thing, not to say that people don't speed, but there is a perception speed. If you notice in the monthly report, you notice how many traffic stops we do make and have versus how many citations we issue. There's a huge education component with what we do at the same time. So again, we don't go back to punish the community, but we're going to educate. And sometimes people do deserve a ticket, depending on the speed they're going. And we're happy to give that to them if they're going, you know, the right speed or higher speed than normal, because we want compliance. And so there's got to be accountability. So we're going to continue to move that around. We're going to continue to put that data in there. We're not saying that people don't speed. We're just saying that it might not be as prevalent as some think. That's all we're saying.
And Counselor Labonte, I want to add that I don't think we're making a conclusion from this data. I think the first sentence in that report is critical. It says, the radar trailer is a tool the police department uses to deter speeding and encourage safe driving practices in and around the city of Gladstone.
So and I think when you take everything, thank you, Administrator, when you take everything into account and you add on the ODOT grants that you approved for us to take, coupled with that, we have our own little traffic team, although we don't have the staffing to put together just a formal traffic team, we use that tool or that money as a way to enforce those traffic laws. So as you can see, sometimes they increase, and some months are are born, some months are higher. It just depends. And it just depends on the weather. It just depends on the conditions. Some months will arrest more drunk drivers than others. I can't I can't tell you why. It just it just happens. So it just means we're out there and concerned. I understand what you're saying, and I understand your concerns. You and I have probably had this conversation during traffic safety before, and and we can sometimes agree to disagree on some of our philosophies, but we all, our intentions are the same, and our outcomes are the same. We want a safe community, a safe driving community, which is why the police department focuses so much. So I do appreciate your comments.
And 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 I love what you guys, you know, I've been a huge supporter of the way that you've approached traffic safety and everything out there. So all totally respectful. I guess, to be very clear, and it's not anything to do with the way that any of your staff is handling speeding. That's all good. My and then we'll be done with this, and because we spent too much time on it already. The just the idea of if we're saying that cars aren't necessarily speeding through here, this area, but there's that sign does indicate like in when people see that radar sign, the instinct is to slow down. That's the purpose of it. So any info and okay, that first reading, I get that. But I guess my concern would be where we are, you know, that the information we get from that isn't, as you mentioned, necessarily going to be the same as if there was no trailer in that area.
That that very well could be. And but I will say that I know Public Works has a and we've talked about this. They have a box we can put upon a post and that that is blank. And we've compared the two, I think, last year.
Okay.
Last year or two years, and they were pretty similar.
Okay.
They were pretty similar. So that's what we kind of base it on. And I can do it again on our next readings and and get Public Works to put one up just for information, just to see if our theory is correct. But nonetheless, we're still going to continue to be out there running traffic, for sure.
For sure. All right. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you. Public safety is one of our goals this year, this biennium. And so to get this kind of information for those of us who don't always attend traffic safety advisory board groups and keep up with this, it's good for all of us to get the reminder. So I will accept a motion to approve or to, I guess, we accept the monthly reports from staff for March twenty-twenty-five.
I'll move to accept.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Labonte and seconded by Counselor Mitchell to approve the monthly reports. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The reports are accepted. We move on now to Gladstone City event announcements. I understand we did not have any requests in advance. Do we have anybody that told you before the meeting they wanted to do an announcement tonight? Counselor Garlington, who is on the council, is making a request. Okay, Counselor Garlington.
I just didn't want to wait until the very end, because sometimes people turn their TVs off. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that the Arbor Day Plant Sale is coming up on the twenty-sixth of April, which is the weekend after Easter at the Gladstone Nature Park. We have so many plants. We have so many people coming. We have a lot of neighbors showing up. And we're really, really excited for the group that we have this year and the people that are putting out their time and energy for this community. So last year, we saw almost a thousand people in the park, I think. And, you know, we could exceed that. Who knows? I love seeing the families up there. I love seeing people get their hands dirty in the dirt. So I hope to see any of you up there and all of you as well.
Very good. Thank you for that announcement. Yeah, we hope there's really good weather for this, and we get another great turnout, because it is a it is a good event. All right. The next item on our agenda is a legislative hearing. I will use the little script that we have for this, and then at the appropriate point, call for the staff report that leads into it. And I apologize, I'm reading from a script, because there are some things that we need to, by law, include in in how we conduct one of these. So the public hearing on ordinance one five-three-eight, approving text amendments to Gladstone Municipal Code, which is city file T X T two-five-zero-one. The proposed amendments would would regarding would amend chapter seventeen point two-nine regarding flood management area district. I'll use that as a description. So the conduct of the public hearing will be that we will follow this order. First, a presentation of a staff report, then entry of correspondence, if any, into the record, then public testimony. We'll take additional staff comments, then questions from the city council. Then we would close the hearing and no further testimony from the audience, and then discussion and deliberation by the city council and a decision. Regarding testimony, any interested person may present testimony concerning the proposed amendments. The public hearing is your opportunity to comment on the proposal before the city makes a decision. We want to hear what you have to say, and we want you to give your point of view. Help us to understand why you have drawn your conclusions and how it relates to the proposal. Public testimony for this hearing will be called for in three groups: testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you wish to speak, you should fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the city recorder. And I'll recognize persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through me. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record, as this hearing is being taped. If you are participating online, click the raise hand button on the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I would this time, I would like to members of this ask members of the city council if you are planning to abstain from this matter or need to declare any conflict of interest. Please indicate the nature of the conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. So we'll just go down in order. I'll start with Counselor Huckabee. Are you planning to participate or abstain?
Participate.
And do you have any conflict?
No.
All right. Same questions, Counselor Mitchell.
Participate and no.
Participate and no.
Participate and no conflict. No abstentions or conflict. Participate.
Participate and no conflict.
All right. And I plan to participate, and I have no conflict either. So this is the time we would have the staff report to introduce this item in more detail. So I will call on Heather, our planning staff, to introduce this to us.
Thank you, Mayor Milch. We're just pulling up a brief slideshow here that we'll go through and then answer any questions. Okay. Well, as the mayor stated, we are here tonight to discuss changes to the development code, chapter seventeen point two-nine flood management area district. This is a legislative public hearing, because it is a comprehensive plan change that we're conducting on behalf of the city's comprehensive plan. Just a little background, Gladstone is definitely not the only city going through this code change process right now. And it stems back from twenty sixteen, when the National Fishery, National Marine Fisheries Services issued a biological opinion. And I'm really sorry about all the acronyms. There are a ton of them in this project. We try to not do that in planning so much, but FEMA did not get that message. So so they issued this opinion that the National Flood Insurance Program, which is administered by FEMA, which we're all familiar with, is not fully in compliance with the Endangered Species Act. And they identified sixteen types of fish that were steelhead and salmon, as well as resident killer whales, which we're not dealing with in Gladstone. In order to continue participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, Gladstone, as well as all the cities that are within this tan shaded area, who participate in the program, do need to update their regulations in some way to comply with the federal law. All affected jurisdictions were asked were required to choose one implementation path prior to December thirty-first of last year. You had the choice to say, we're not going to allow any development in our floodplain. That was a really clear way to say, we comply, because nothing's happening in our floodplain. You could choose to implement a model ordinance. And FEMA did provide language, but in the state of Oregon, since we have so many rules around language being clear and objective, especially as it applies to housing, there were some concerns by the planning community about the model ordinance language. So we'll talk a little more about that. Or you could say, we're going to do a permit by permit approach, where everyone who comes in the door for a floodplain development permit automatically has to go to through an individualized permit process. So Gladstone looked at these different options, and we decided that the easiest option or the best option for the city would be the model ordinance. And so we did start drafting that language. And then the city attorney team at Beryl's nor Hammond worked together with League of Oregon Cities and other attorneys from around the state. And they were able to come up with model ordinance language that would fit into the individual communities' development codes, like we have tonight for Gladstone. And that would be clear and objective, meeting our requirements from our other Oregon revised statutes about how we write language for development. So what does the language say? Well, the the key pieces are that we want to make sure that development actions, and this is important, because I want to make it clear that it doesn't apply to anything that a property is already doing. So if you already have a home in the floodplain, if you already have a business, if you already have something developed, nothing changes for you unless you want to develop that property, further add structures, change what's on your property in some way that's not just, you know, replacing a building that's in the same footprint, that's exempt, you know, changing out how you your road is paved, that's exempt. So there are things that are exempt. But if you're changing the development on your property, where you'd come to the city for a permit, it is changing how that's going to be reviewed. And the three things that we will look for are the three key floodplain functions. The good news in Gladstone is that we already do two of those. So floodplain storage, that's undeveloped space where water can flow. We already do that. We say no net fill in the floodplain. If you're developing, we say you have to balance it out. So as far as water being able to flow through, we're already compliant. However, we don't specifically look at whether fish can swim past whatever's being built there. So the way I kind of pictured this in my mind when I took all these webinars about this is, one way to develop in the floodplain is to do so where water can pass through the bottom layer until one foot above floodplain. So if you have like louvered or breakaway walls or something that water can rush through when it needs to, that doesn't necessarily mean fish can get through there. And so now we're going to say with our code, you need a biologist to say, this is going to provide the same ability for fish to be able to survive in a flood type situation as it did before you developed your property. So that's the key change. And that is what's required by the the biological opinion. Water quality, we already had requirements about how water absorbs into the ground. We work with Water Environment Services about erosion control. We're already complying with those criteria. And then vegetation, we comply with as well, because we have our habitat conservation areas where we do require you to replant trees and mitigate if you develop a site that's in those areas. And our habitat conservation area is fairly similar to our floodplain. There are some areas where it differs a little bit. But for the most part, Gladstone was fairly in compliance with these three pieces. We'll now just be asking an applicant to ensure that they are complying with the fish passage portion of this requirement. So I think that I mostly covered this information on this side, but that we already require a permit for anyone wanting to develop in the floodplain. We're going to add a new layer of requirement that you submit a biological assessment, or that you have already been permitted by a federal agency, one of the ones listed, or that you already got an approval previously. That has happened. We've issued floodplain permits in the city. So if you're developing under one of those, that works too. Or that you're exempt. Those things we talked about, you're rebuilding a building in the exact footprint you already had, you're paving a road, you're putting in a garden, something like that. Those things are exempt. So where does this affect property in Gladstone? Well, along the Willamette and Clackamas Rivers, we had our G I S folks map this out, just so we could get a good idea of how many properties we were really talking about here. Oh, and I have this zoomed in, too. So let me go west and then east. So on the west side along the Willamette, we are primarily talking about publicly owned property there. So Mildred Bar Park, Doll Beach. The children's course is one that is in, and that is an interesting one, because we've had a pre-application about them potentially having an additional pole barn on their property. So I do think we might see an application from them, even though they're not considered really redevelopable. But the yellow pieces are considered vacant, and the orange pieces are considered potentially redevelopable, meaning the land is more valuable than the structure on the land. So that is how that is assessed. It's a very broad brush assessment. So then when we're looking east, more on the Clackamas River, there we see more potential for this type of regulation to come into effect. There's a few pieces of industrial property that are zoned industrial. They're currently farmed, a bunch of these pieces, and then a few residential pieces as well. So that's where we potentially will see these application permits come in. And the city did notify every single property owner that's within the floodplain that these changes were coming. And we've had several conversations with property owners about what's going on here. The proposed text amendments, as in the Planning Commission recommendation, include the staff report that shows compliance with the Oregon statewide planning goals, our own municipal code, Metro's functional plan, and the transportation planning rule. We did submit the staff report and the proposed changes to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, published in the newspaper and sent to all property owners. And then the Planning Commission reviewed this in a public hearing on March eighteenth and forwarded a recommendation of approval to this body. So with that, we do recommend, along with the Planning Commission, adoption of ordinance fifteen thirty-eight. And there's a sample motion there as well. And I'm happy to take any questions or go back to any slides that might be helpful.
All right. Do any city councillors have a question? Counselor Huckabee?
Thank you. This might be a silly question, because I'm not well-versed in floodplains. Are all the properties that are within this, do we know fish can already swim through? Like, that's, we know this.
Well, that is a great question. That is not a silly question. That is what the biologist is tasked with when they're putting together the report. It said, the first piece of putting together the report says existing conditions.
Yeah.
So they're first going to assess it. And in fact, I spoke to a biologist this morning about the children's course, and we talked about it being a golf course and things like that. So it'll be a case by case basis, and they'll assess whether if it's, you know, it doesn't, it's floodplain, right? So it is connected to the waterway. It is documented that waters do come up to these areas, but they will be looking at all sorts of things when they assess that.
Okay. So if they already don't per the biologist, that's not a stipulation, the builder's going to have to.
Right. Exactly. So their report would say, there's no possible way fish can come to this part of this, for whatever reason. There's no channeling, there's no something. And and in fact, you know, one thing that we talked about, too, is you can't just say, okay, I'm going to put this house here. So I'm going to dig a hole right here that fish can get into, because as waters recede, those fish get stuck, right? So then you're not helping anyone. So we want to make sure it's done thoughtfully. And if right now there's no fish there or no possibility of fish being there, then we don't need to mitigate.
Cool. Thank you.
Counselor Labonte?
And thank you. And I'm just curious from the I did not watch the Planning Commission meeting. Were there was there a robust conversation or anything that we should know about from that conversation?
There was not. They thought that the application materials covered the the topic clearly, and that they understood this is coming from the need for Gladstone to maintain flood insurance. And so they there was not a robust conversation.
Counselor Garlington?
You asked one of my questions, so that's takes that one off. My question is, does this take into account the changes to adjacent properties?
It does. Well, the biologist would take into account what is existing at the time the development permit is submitted. So if right now your property is vacant and next door is vacant, but next door develops, and then you want to build, whatever's in the reach of the watershed whatever's in the reach of the watershed that would affect your property would be taken into account. I don't know, because I'm not a biologist, how far out they look for that. But they'll take into account whatever's on the ground the day that they say, we want to develop this property. Give us an existing conditions report and an assessment of what mitigation needs to happen.
So a potential builder could just wait until the summertime and then get by?
Oh, no, I think that there are other, there's other ways the biologists assess this. They know where high water is. They know what habitat is. And that's why it's required to be either a fisheries biologist or a wetland biologist. There's an ODOT approved list of Endangered Species Act consultants, which we are not, my company. So you need to hire those people who are skilled and trained and have worked at least four years in the field of identifying habitat.
Okay. And then my other question is, you had talked earlier about if something was existing, that it was permitted outright.
Right.
What about something that's completely in the wrong when it was built? We're just going to allow it again, even though it really should be fixed?
It depends. So we do have nonconforming use standards. So that would also come into play if something was built without permitting or without design review approval or whatever was required at the time. If it's considered nonconforming, then we'd apply those standards as well as our floodplain standards.
Okay, thank you.
You made reference to insurance, flood insurance. I know there's a lot in the news lately about people in wildfire areas who are concerned that their insurance rates are going to go up because there's a map out there that says, oh, you are in a, you know, an area where it's danger of fire and therefore the insurance industry wants to charge you more. How is this going to impact property owners on the insurance side of things?
The map is already out there. You can already go, and that's the first map on this presentation. You can already go to FEMA's website and you are already mapped. And so nothing changes with the mapping. Your property is either in or out of the floodplain, you're either subject to floodplain standards and floodplain insurance or you're not. That doesn't change. And Gladstone's ability to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program remains in place if we comply with these federal laws. If we don't comply and we say, nah, you know, we don't think fish are that big of a deal around here. We run the risk of losing our ability to participate in that program.
All right. And just to clarify, when you say Gladstone's participation in that, in that program, you mean that's something that the city pays to be involved in or that the residents of the city are covered because the city's code complies?
It's more that the residents and property owners and business owners would be eligible to apply. The city gets a rating based on how well they maintain their floodplain codes and their development code. So it's individually purchased insurance. But the city probably also would have it if they have property within the floodplain. So they would be subject to it as well. But it is more about the city residents and property owners being eligible to participate.
Okay. And it is eligible but optional. So if a homeowner says, I don't want to have flood insurance on my property, even though I near, they did, oh, it's never going to flood here. I'll choose not to do it. Just like you can be underinsured in a lot of areas. It's not a requirement. It's not a mandate on an individual property owner. It's a choice they make.
That's a good question that I'm not well versed in. I think if you have a mortgage, you would definitely have to do that.
Okay.
Bank requirement.
Yeah.
But I think if you own your property outright and you choose not to insure it, I probably you could do that.
I don't know if 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 we can get Chad online, if Chad wants to weigh in on that question that went a little bit off topic, but maybe is better for an attorney. Chad, you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, I think Heather is exactly right that you're not required to have insurance on your property like you're required to have property or insurance when you're driving a car. There's not a similar law like that. There are sort of business requirements, as Heather was mentioning. For example, if you have a mortgage, your mortgage company is going to require you to have certain insurance and they may require you to have floodplain insurance. So I think that's really what it's going to come down to.
Thank you. That, thank you for that clarification. I just want to put this into context for real property owners, real residents who this might affect. And what we're really doing is improving environmental standards. And let's hope that those are still in effect under the current administration by the time all the cities get around to doing this. That's just a comment. Okay.
I may just have one more.
One more question from councillor Labonte.
It's my understanding that, I mean, this would make it more expensive to develop on those properties and to do improvements to your home.
I agree. I think that there will be some expense to hiring a biologist in addition to what you already. You've already had to hire an architect or an engineer to put together the floodproofing piece. And this, unless they have that on staff or that individual that they hire is already capable of doing those things, which could be the case. I think there could be an added expense to doing that.
And a little more time too, or?
Probably, although I think you could run it concurrently. Yeah, typically if you need like a transportation assessment with a development, that's running concurrently to the design happening. I think if you're in the floodplain, you know, certainly if you've come in for a pre-application, we've told you like you're going to need this too. So you're running those processes concurrently.
Thank you.
Sure. Councillor Garland would like to see another map. You want to go to the close up map?
The one that had the square picture, the square colors that said this one.
This one?
Or there's a close up of it.
Yes, I could go east or west.
Wondering if this took into account the noted flooding from our last big flood 98.
I would think so because the most recent FEMA mapping update was in 2016. So I believe they would have taken that into account.
All right. So that gives us a good report from staff with clarification questions. Councillor Garland, are you late still on? Are you, do you have more? Okay. All right. So let's, we'll move on through the script. Correspondence. Have we received any correspondence on this matter other than those items included in the agenda materials?
I've received none.
Okay. This is the time then for public testimony. Does anyone wish to speak in support of the proposal?
I've not seen any hands up and I did not receive any requests.
Okay. And so I assume then that no one asked to speak in opposition to the proposal either?
I received no requests.
Or neutral testimony? Oh. You have a neutral, we have neutral testimony from a citizen.
John Kilstrom, citizen of Gladstone. Question is, the county has, when you have property, they have what they call green zones. And this is potential flooding areas. Does the city and the county work together on that or is this just just Gladstone and does not have any county input?
That's a good question for staff. Ms. Austin?
Yes. So this project, this in particular is just the city that implements its own floodplain. So as soon as you leave the city limits, the little red dashed line, Clackamas County takes over in the unincorporated county and they apply their floodplain standards, which are also subject to these same updates.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. So do you have anything to add, Heather, that would help us in making a decision on this?
I don't have anything to add. I, great questions. I think, yeah, it's pretty straightforward what needs to happen. And like I said, I'm in touch with at least one group that's planning to do some development in the floodplain. So we're already working through some of these code pieces.
You'll have a real life application.
Yeah, so far so good.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to declare the public hearing on city file TXT dash two five dash zero one closed. And now it's time for the council to deliberate. So any concerns, issues, pros or cons coming from council members? I see heads shaking, which I'm going to assume means that you are in favor of doing this. So I will ask for a motion on the proposal.
I'll make a motion. I motion that we.
Check your screen.
What? Oh, sorry. I was reading from my hair. Thank you. I think I was on track. I moved to adopt ordinance 1538 and ordinance approving text amendments to update Gladstone Municipal Code Chapter 17.29, city file TXT dash 25 dash 01.
All right. It was moved by councillor Huckabee, to whom I apologize for interrupting. You were ahead of me. You were finding it on your page and seconded by councillor Garland. Any more discussion? Thank you to staff. Tammy, will you go ahead and call the role?
Councillor Labonte?
Yes.
Councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Councillor Garland?
Yes.
Councillor Huckabee?
Yes.
Councillor Mitchell?
Yes.
Councillor Blough?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted unanimously. That means it goes into effect. Let me ask one more question. I made a comment at a recent gathering of mayors about how sometimes for Gladstone, unfunded mandates from the state to do various things become funded mandates. Did we get any funding assistance from the state on doing this or was it all on our own dime?
We did not get any funding assistance. The city of Gladstone paid for this.
Okay. Good to know when we get help and when we don't. But and I'm grateful that we have staff who are able to mobilize and work with other cities too, because our legal staff and our planning staff, you didn't all adopt identical language, I guess. It had to fit into the existing code, so it varied. But you looked at some of those issues and found a way to make it a little seamless into into the codes.
Yes, all credit to staff at Beryl's or Hammond for coming up with the language and working with the other cities. Yep, that was great.
All right. Very good. We move on next to Agenda Item 11, which is to consider approval of Resolution 1242, a resolution establishing a proclamation process for the city of Gladstone. So Administrator Betts, I'll let you present this one from the staff.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So tonight is the final step of a lengthy conversation that the former council and this council has had in regards to establishing a process to have proclamations. At the last meeting, the city attorney and I took copious notes on some changes for having the requests for city proclamations as well as an example of a form that's in your packet. It has guidelines. It has the content of a proclamation and format requirements of a proclamation request. I believe that we've incorporated all of the changes that you requested. So tonight we're asking you to adopt the resolution, which would establish a proclamation process for the city of Gladstone. And if you have any questions or changes, then Chad and I'd be happy to answer those.
All right. Does anyone have any comments, questions, requests for changes or are we ready to proceed on this one? Councillor Labonte?
Yes, please. And I know this has been a lengthy conversation and it's, I know that I've had a great opportunity to talk to a lot of people about their views on proclamations, which most folks seem pretty ambivalent, which is par for the course with a lot of things. The, a lot of it from folks of high demographic, it seemed to be like the intent behind, behind the proclamation and how and how that matters, where the city is coming from and its intent. And we assume that our intent here is a positive intent with these. I do want to acknowledge the conversations I had with a few folks regarding some of these proclamations and how and in fact, one that we have tonight can be perhaps particularly triggering for some folks in that child abuse prevention is obviously incredibly important. Most folks who are abused as children are now adults. And I was kind of not so much surprised. But I think it's worth mentioning that some of these proclamations may be triggering to some people. And, you know, so I hope that we can just kind of hold that in our heart as we make some of these decisions. And I'd also like to see in a proclamation process, as I've said all along, that you know, actions speak louder than words. I appreciate the proclamations and the efforts that these groups put in behind their cause. But I do want to see the city have some type of action. I'm hoping in the very least that these groups that come in to do a proclamation would be kind enough or have the resources perhaps or the desire to perhaps have a booth here in City Hall. A booth at the community center, a simple act so they can have a better way of getting their cause and their information out to the community. I think this hallway would be great to spruce it up with a little bit of love. Maybe it's Arbor Month or whatever and there's seeds or whatever the groups come up with. But I'd love to see action behind the proclamation. And I sincerely hope that that other board members will agree and that we can make that a special part of our proclamation process. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Labonte, councillor Garland.
I guess my sentiments follow along the same line a little bit. As I've said before, someone very smart in the LOC once said that you can pretend to care, but you can't pretend to show up. And I feel like the proclamations that we make should be backed by action. I won't say that it necessarily has to weigh on our shoulders as we all have full plates all the time. But I'd like to just put that note out there to people that are looking for a proclamation from this council and or acknowledgement of their service to the city, that there is action and there is showing up behind that note, that it's not just a one trick pony and to say something doesn't always mean enough. So, thank you.
Thank you both. In response, I will just say in terms of the the resolution coming up later in the agenda regarding Child Abuse Awareness Month, if you want to know action, take a look at your police report, the Detective's Monthly Report, page 612, that lists a number of cases assigned and cases closed and cases cleared that do involve sexual abuse of children in our community. It's long concerned me that that report has so many cases of that type. And this came to us from an agency that works with prosecutors, works with police departments, works with victims to help make sure that this issue is addressed in appropriate ways. And so, but I share the same concern. We can't just let words, you know, speak for us. It is good that there are groups that, the groups often that bring these things to us and the groups that support them are doing action in a community. And we'll get to two of those resolutions in a little while if we go ahead and adopt this. Councillor Labonte?
I guess staff, would it be possible to have a booth? And of course, these groups are doing this because they're putting so much work into it and I, I accept that. Yes, that's exactly right. But it just, would we be able to have a simple booth in our city hall or in the community center so they have another avenue to get that information out to folks here in our community, very specifically?
If an organization wanted to display information and they had done a proclamation, I don't think that'd be any problem. Whether it was here, I'd have to talk to the community center manager about where that placement could be. But certainly we have room here at City Hall for that to happen.
Councillor Huckabee?
Thank you. Couple of thoughts on that. I don't want any stipulations in place or people thinking that there needs to be because we have now finally gotten to a point where we can acknowledge these people and celebrate these people. And most of them are going to be, you know, an underserved population in some, you know, aspect. So now we're here and we're going to do proclamations, you know, and we have a process for that. But now, but now you have to work for it. Seems completely opposite of what we're trying to do. I've never seen a booth in City Hall before, nor would I want to put, you know, a nonprofit, for instance, say, hey, now that we've done this proclamation, we want you to put a booth in City Hall where a nominal amount of people, I'm assuming walk in every day. Having like, you know, pamphlets out there and absolutely like completely do that. But to think that they need action on their part because we're doing proclamations now versus us doing the work to follow these proclamations. versus us doing the work to follow these proclamations is counterintuitive.
Respectfully, I was just trying to give another venue for them to share their information, nothing more than that, nor was it a stipulation for them to do any extra work. It'd just be cool if, you know, they'd put a booth up and share information with our citizens, maybe here in City Hall and the community centers. That's all.
All right, well, you know, the purpose in our staff report, part of it is to raise awareness. So there are a variety of ways people can do that, they can do that, you know, through city communications means, through their own. And let's hope that that happens in a wide variety of ways. Is anyone ready to make a motion regarding the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twelve forty-two, a resolution establishing a proclamation process for the city of Gladstone.
I second that.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Huckabee and seconded by Counselor Blough. Any further discussion? All right, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Roberts.
Nope.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the resolution passes six to one. All right, and we move on to Item eleven. Item eleven is a proclamation that I prepared based on input provided to us by the Children's Center. And so, in accordance with our newly adopted policy, this is coming at a later time in the meeting than we would normally do it, because I think we'll be making time at the beginning of the meetings during Gladstone City Event Time to read these proclamations. But I will read it aloud now. Proclamation. Whereas child abuse is a tragedy that impacts the well-being of all, and whereas child abuse prevention programs require strong community partnerships, and whereas child abuse prevention requires a public commitment to create safe and nurturing environments for parents and guardians to raise their children, and whereas this community recognizes that children are our most valuable and vulnerable resources and are key to our prosperity and quality of life, and whereas by providing a healthy environment for our children free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can help ensure that children of Gladstone will grow to their full potential. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Michael Milch, Mayor of the City of Gladstone, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Gladstone and call upon all residents, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand this eighth day of April twenty twenty-five, and it's signed by Michael Milch, Mayor of Gladstone, Oregon. Item twelve on our agenda is regards the Arbor Day proclamation, and I will let staff introduce this one.
Thank you Mayor, and the reason why you have a staff report for this one is because this is the first year that Gladstone's been recognized as a tree city. And one of the requirements is that we have a proclamation during Arbor Day. You'll notice on page twelve-twelve in the packet that it's the mayor, Mayor Michael Milch. So you are two mayors as they address you in this one. But basically what I wanted to highlight is that we put a lot of work into establishing a tree ordinance, a tree committee, and we have the Friends of the Gladstone Nature Park that do a wonderful job for our Arbor Day, which as we heard earlier is going to be Saturday, April twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. And so I just wanted to provide you a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation recognizing that Gladstone is now a Tree City USA. I believe you have a plaque on the dais that we are going to display in City Hall, and we're going to work really hard to continue to be recertified each year. So with that Mayor, I will let you go ahead and read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas trees provide essential benefits to our environment by improving air quality, conserving water, reducing erosion, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees enhance the beauty of our communities, increase property values, reduce energy costs by providing shade and windbreaks, and contribute to the well-being of residents. And whereas Arbor Day was first observed in eighteen seventy-two and has since been celebrated across the nation as a day to plant and care for trees. And whereas planting and maintaining trees is a commitment to the future health and prosperity of our community and planet. And whereas the city of Gladstone encourages all citizens to participate in tree planting activities and recognize the vital role trees play in our daily lives. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Michael Milch, Mayor of the City of Gladstone, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April twenty-six, twenty twenty-five as Arbor Day in the city of Gladstone and call upon all residents, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to celebrate this day by planting trees, engaging in conservation efforts, and fostering a sustainable and greener future for generations to come. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand this eighth day of April twenty twenty-five, again signed Michael Milch, Mayor of Gladstone, Oregon. And I look forward to reading that one every year, I believe that's an ongoing requirement. That's all we have on our agenda of business items, so, and just call your attention to the fact that there is an agenda planning document at the end of your packet. But we move now to business carried forward, is there any of that?
I have nothing further, thank you.
All right, and I think I heard that there is no business from the audience, is that still correct, Tammy?
That is still correct.
Okay, so it's time for business from the council. So I will move to the left end, Counselor Garlington, you may go first, and we'll move from my left to my right.
So again, just the Arbor Day Festival, I'm, we're ready, we're excited. And, you know, I love seeing all of you guys down there and supporting the efforts of a large part of our community, so. That, I just want to say one thing when it comes to child abuse, which is a horrific thing. It's generational at times, and it affects children in ways down the line that people will never completely understand. And I just want to remind people, if you see something, say something. Have a very happy Easter, and we'll see you guys April soon.
Twenty-second.
Counselor Roberts.
I have a brief statement to read. Dear Mayor Milch, members of the council, after much reflection, I'm writing to formally resign from my position on the Gladstone City Council effective four-nine twenty twenty-five. Serving on the council for the past two and a half years has been a truly rewarding experience. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to help steward the city alongside such passionate and dedicated individuals. The relationships I've built and the work we've done together will stay with me, and I have the deepest appreciation for the outstanding leadership and staff that keep Gladstone moving forward every day. As a young adult in a dynamic and transitional stage of my life, I find myself navigating a range of changes and opportunities that are shaping my future. While serving on the city council's been a privilege and remains deeply important to me, I've come to recognize that stepping away at this time will allow me to fully engage with the evolving commitments and directions ahead. This decision comes from a place of respect and reflection, the respect for the community, and the belief that any commitment I make deserves my full focus, energy, and dedication. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the current and former city council, city leadership, and the community for your support, collaboration, and shared passion for making Gladstone the incredible place it is. It's been an honor to contribute to that mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Roberts. That is sad news to us, but we understand that you are at a place in your life where you need that ability to give yourself the best of yourself to whatever you want to do, and I understand fully. Let me ask Chad, we did not have, we did not have knowledge of this prior to tonight's meeting. Normally, we have, we declare a vacancy and begin a process for filling a vacancy on the council when one emerges. Can we add an agenda item to declare vacancy tonight, or should that have been pre-noticed prior to the meeting?
You're permitted to add agenda items to the meeting. I believe if I heard correctly that the resignation will be effective on the nineteenth, and so you-
The ninth.
I believe it's the ninth tomorrow.
I apologize. So yeah, so you could certainly declare this tonight, or you could add that agenda item to your work session on the twenty-second, or wait till next month. In any event, staff can move forward and advertise the position if you want them to, even before you declare the vacancy. Declaring the vacancy is just a formalized step to actually make the office vacant.
All right, so I appreciate that. So rather than push for a declaration tonight, which was not on the agenda, I will instruct staff on behalf of the council, if that's okay, to begin looking at publicizing and, you know, doing the process for filling the vacancy. And then the next time we are in session, we can formally declare vacancy on the position. Is that okay with council? Is that a procedure, okay? All right, Counselor Labonte.
All right. I, as a person who's involved with traffic safety, I just want to acknowledge the, this has been a really bad month for traffic fatalities in Clackamas County, and I just urge everybody to please drive sober, slow down, wear your seatbelt, and just pay attention, please, when you're behind the wheel. Motorcyclists are going to start hitting the road, typically a pretty bad time of year for motorcyclists out there. We have a county that's changing in a lot of ways, and our rural roads that folks are used to for decades going down at high rates of speed now have neighborhoods and houses, and so please just take care while driving and, you know, look out for each other, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Labonte, Counselor Blough.
Let's see, I just wanted to say this last month was relatively quiet. I went to several town halls and also attended the Oregon Business Alliances. Very informative information on energy in Oregon, including a lot of micro-generation projects that were really interesting. And wish everybody a pass, a happy Passover.
Thank you, Counselor Mitchell.
I want to start by saying thank you for your service, Counselor Roberts. I didn't get to serve with you long, but I appreciate your service. I have several other things, this week is National Crime Victims Rights Week. Today is National Library Workers' Day, so if you see a library worker, say hello. Appreciate them. It is also, this whole week is National Library Week, so various activities are going on at different libraries this week. Gladstone Library Foundation is still seeking members. Oak Lodge Library on Saturday, four-twelve, is having a Donuts for Donations event from eleven AM to two PM. Donate items and get a donut as a thank you. Also Senator Mark Meek is having a town hall at Gladstone Library this Thursday at five-thirty PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Huckabee.
Thank you Mayor, I don't have a lot to report on tonight, kind of to echo the crime prevention. There is on Thursday, the Third Annual Liberty Plaza Crime Victims Event, and it starts at two-thirty, and it starts with a kickoff from District Attorney John Wentworth, and then goes through four-forty-five PM. There will be tables there for community-based organizations that help with these types of things, whether that be with law enforcement, or with housing, or with the victims directly. So I would recommend everybody go, learn a little bit more about that. Other than that, I'm so, so, so happy that the proclamation process has been completed and finalized, and we are good to go now, that's it.
This past week, I had the third, I think, opportunity to present in one form or another a State of the City address. I was invited by the Kiwanis Club to do something along with Superintendent Jeremiah Patterson last month. And then the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium had mayors from throughout the area speaking to the business interests of Greater Portland, Inc. I think that's what it's called, yes. And then last week, the Clackamas County Business Alliance had about ten area mayors of Clackamas County talking about some of their concerns and celebrations and, you know, the impact of business things in their community. Next week, the sixteenth, the Clackamas, North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring a forum for the mayors within their district, which includes Oregon City, Gladstone, Milwaukee, and Happy Valley. So, and every week, it seems as I prepare for these events, I thought, oh, good, I'll just do one speech four times, that'll be easy. There's always something different happening nationally, locally, particularly impacting business and trade and economic development. And those are what these groups want to hear about from cities. So I'm glad to have that opportunity to go and share and to know that we have made economic development a high priority in our city and that as national policy changes that could impact businesses locally, and as we have worked to try to make changes in some of our zoning and districting here in the city, that we have opportunities to respond to some of those changes in positive ways that can benefit residents, consumers, business owners, employees, people who work from home, people who commute to work. So it gets me thinking about all those issues that I love to read about and an opportunity to reflect on them in a group of other mayors too, because we're very much a regional economy and what happens in Gladstone is often impacted by what goes on in Portland and even, you know, beyond the Columbia River in Vancouver, Washington. And so it's a great opportunity to meet with people who care about what happens in cities and to, you know, to share the good things that are going on in Gladstone. The Gladstone School Board meets tomorrow night, I will attend that meeting. And I've been attending the Clackamas Library Board meetings as well to hear and to keep up on progress of the second branch of the Gladstone Oak Lodge Library. That building is underway and looks like it'll be opening sometime this coming fall. So we'll have the second ribbon cutting of a library in a two-year, in a one-year period, I guess. So I think that's all I have for tonight, one more item from Counselor Huckabee.
Thank you, sorry. I just want to encourage everybody in our community to either volunteer or donate to nonprofits. I'm sure we're all aware of what's going on nationally, and it is affecting our local nonprofits. I'll give you an example, loved one received five thousand pounds less of food for the people they serve today, which is a major amount of food, so wherever we can step up and help, I encourage it.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Labonte, seconded by Counselor Garlington. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Labonte.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, we are adjourned at seven forty PM.